Vice Mayor Angela Williams, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. Father, we pray that you would continue to bless our city, bless every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make our city great. Bless the children and young people in our city, cover them, put a hedge of protection around them, and keep them safe from all harm. Bless our council and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love to serve our people, and let all we do glorify you. These and all other blessings we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Please.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The motion, will you please read the resolution for the closed meeting?
Resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. I apologize for the lateness of the start of the meeting. I promise you, the City Council was conducting city business down below, but typically, we are up here at the right time. But I, again, I'm sorry we're starting late. The process which we'll follow for tonight's meeting is the first thing we're going to do is take up the couple of bids and invitations to bid, which have been returned for tonight's docket. That's, those are straightforward. We have one public hearing, I'm sorry, we have four public hearings that will move to the one consent agenda item, and we have a number of regular agenda items. We'll vote on all of those matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the City Council on the non-agenda items, that means something that's not on the printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. All we ask is that you sign a slip of paper so I can have your name in front of me when I call it. The papers, the slip has been made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So there are no ceremonial matters, so we'll move directly here to invitation to bid number one, and that's the next item on the agenda, please. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. This is a receipt of bids pursuant to invitation to bid and notice of public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to state law, public notice having been inserted in the local press to accept bids for a long-term garage parking agreement with a term of 10 years for 30 residential parking spaces in the Town Point Garage, subject to certain terms and conditions.
Okay, how many bids have been received?
One bid.
And would you please read the bid and mark it for identification?
The 131 Granby LLC has submitted the following bid. The undersigned 131 Granby LLC submits its bid to enter into a parking garage agreement with the city pursuant to which it will lease up to 30 spaces in the Town Point Garage for an initial term of 10 years at a rate established from time to time by City Council for unreserved residential parking in accordance with terms and conditions set forth in a term sheet to be attached to the ordinance approving the leases. Exhibit A, maximum amount payable under the lease based on current rates is $181,800.
Right now, are there any additional bids being offered this evening for any member of the public? Okay, if there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, if there's no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed then. Is there a recommendation from city staff regarding the bid received?
City staff recommends that the bid by 131 Granby LLC be accepted, parking agreement awarded to 131 Granby LLC.
Okay, is there any discussion from any member of the council? If there's no discussion, I will ask the city clerk to read the proposed ordinance, please.
I have an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by 131 Granby LLC for a long-term garage parking agreement with a term of 10 years for 30 residential parking spaces in the Town Point Garage, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Next item on the agenda, please.
The next item is receipt of bids pursuant to invitation to bid and notice of public hearing scheduled for this day pursuant to state law, public notice having been inserted in the local press to accept bids for a long-term sublease agreement with a term of approximately 18 years for premises located in the Monroe Building, premises currently leased by the city from NRHA Arts Education Limited Partnership, subject to certain terms and conditions.
All right, how many bids have been received, please?
One.
Would you please read the bid and mark it for identification?
Virginia Stage Company submitted the following bid. On behalf of BSE, please accept the enclosed bid for sublease with the city for a portion of the Monroe Building. I understand this will be considered by Norfolk City Council at its meeting on Tuesday, October 14, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Signed, Ann B. Brogan. And I've marked it for identification as Virginia Stage Company bid 101414.
Thank you. Are there any additional bids being offered this evening? Okay, if there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, if there's no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from the city staff regarding the bid received from the Virginia Stage Company?
City staff recommends that the bid by Virginia Stage Company be accepted and the sublease agreement awarded to Virginia Stage Company.
Okay, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will ask the city clerk to read the proposed ordinance.
An ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Virginia Stage Company for a sublease with a term of approximately 18 years for a portion of the Monroe Building, which premises are currently leased by the city from NRHA Arts Education Limited Partnership, subject to certain terms and conditions, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Okay. PH1, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day under state law, public notice having been inserted in the local press on the application of Edward McCullough to amend the city's future land use map within the general plan from industrial to multifamily residential and for change of zoning from I-1 limited industrial to G-1 Granby Monticello Corridor mixed use on property located at 200 to 213 East 22nd Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay, the only member of the public signed up to address the council on this issue is the applicant, Andy McCullough. Any questions? Okay, you can call the roll.
I have two ordinances. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for properties located at 200 to 213 East 22nd Street from industrial to multifamily residential, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Also, I just want to say for the record how much we appreciate the cooperation of Coca-Cola bottling in this regard and the letter we received from them last evening, so. Okay, public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day under state law, on the application of New Hope Church of Norfolk for a change of zoning from R8 single-family and R11 moderate-density multifamily to conditional I-1 institutional on property located at 3221 through 3229 Argon Avenue and 3212 Breast Avenue. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, I see our friend Reverend Calvin Durham here, and Reverend is the only one signed up to speak. Any comments? Okay, you can call the roll.
An ordinance to rezone properties located at 3221 to 3229 Argon Avenue and 3212 Breast Avenue from R8 and R11 to conditional I-1, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission for text amendment to Section 11-31 Pedestrian Commercial Overlay District, 35th Street PCO of the city zoning ordinance to revise certain development standards, and by 5-0 vote, the commission recommends approval. And I have an ordinance to amend Section 11-31 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk 1992 so as to modify the regulations and development standards for the 35th Street Pedestrian Commercial Overlay District, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day under state law, on the application of New Hope Church of Norfolk for a change of zoning from R8 single-family and R11 moderate-density multifamily to conditional I-1 institutional on property located at 3221 through 3229 Argon Avenue and 3212 Breast Avenue. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Just a second, Ellis James, I'm sorry, Ellis, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Jones. My name is LSW James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place in the City of Norfolk. I just wanted to add my support to this simply because I think there is a real need. I'm not a part of the group, but I do think this is something that's very important in our city, and I do support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. James. Okay, call the roll.
An ordinance approving the sublease to Norfolk Society for the prevention of cruelty to animals upon certain conditions of a portion of certain property located at 5585 Sabre Road leased by the city for its animal care center and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a sublease agreement on behalf of the city, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you very much. The consent agenda, C1, please.
Approve the consent agenda. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as 5018 on property located at 5018 East Princess Anne Road, and this matter was continued on September 9, and the applicant has requested for an additional two weeks, Mr. President, continuance for an additional two weeks.
Okay, I saw that request earlier, but Mr. Wright, are you here? Just a second, and I know you've brought with you a couple of other people, Gabrielle Rapasardi and Hayward Coffey, but is Mr. Scott here, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, there's been a request to continue the matter for two weeks. Mr. Scott, you're here this evening. We can hear from you, or we can, you can come back when we can, when we have the presentation.
I can afford this in twelve, two weeks.
Is that all right with you?
It's quite fine.
Okay, is that what you still want, Mr. Wright?
No.
And that's okay. Then the motion, unless there's some concern here, I mean, okay.
That's right.
The motion is to continue again for two more weeks. All right, thank you for coming down, and thank you.
That's October 28, Mr. President.
Right, honor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2, please.
R2 is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as UMO on property located at 4117 Granby Street, Suite A. Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
All right, Mr. Basin is here. Is the applicant to answer questions if we have any? Okay, you can call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3, thank you.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as 360 Asian Diner and Sports Bar on property located at 5957 East Virginia Beach Boulevard, Suite 18.
Sorry.
By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R4.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as The Norva on property located at 317 Monticello Avenue and FM Restaurant on property located at 320 Granby Street. 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the chart.
Okay, go ahead. And Rick Ken is here to answer any questions if we have any. Rick, are you, there you are, okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as The Fresh Market on property located at 924 West 21st Street. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Bruce Thompson is here to answer questions. Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Princess Anne Shell on property located at 3502 East Princess Anne Road. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, and the applicant is here to ask questions. I'm sorry, I can't read the name. It's Charistaista, or so, but anyway. There you go. Thank you for coming down. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. And the applicant is here to ask questions. I'm sorry, I can't read the name. It's Charistaista, or so, but anyway. There you go. Thank you for coming down. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Brickie Coffee House on property located at 4117 Granby Street, Suite C. 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R9.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment with no alcoholic beverages known as Juice Bar Juices on property located at 245 Granby Street, Suite 247. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is Mr. Wright here? Thank you. No alcoholic beverages, Mr. Wright?
No.
Okay, all right.
Are you gonna make?
The juice bar.
No.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. Good luck. R10.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Nouvelle Restaurant on property located at 217 Gray Street, and by 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R11.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as MacArthur Pharmacy on property located at 261 Granby Street. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Hen, Rick Hen is here to answer questions if we have any. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R12.
to encroach up to two and a half feet with a stockade fence onto city property at twenty-seven twenty-eight Tate Terrace. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
What would be thirteen, R thirteen?
Yes, sir. An ordinance permitting BGK Main Street Tower Operating Associates Limited Partnership to encroach five feet by forty-five feet into a city pedestrian easement with a handicap ramp, landing steps, and railing at three hundred East Main Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R fourteen.
An ordinance permitting Old Dominion University to encroach into the right-of-way of Forty-third Street, Forty-ninth Street, and Palatine Avenue with pedestrian crosswalks, signage, and lighting signs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R fifteen.
An ordinance permitting Liberty Street LLC to encroach seventy-one inches plus or minus into the right-of-way of Grammy Street at seven sixty-three Grammy Street with a sixty-five inches plus or minus high by thirty-four inches plus or minus long by twenty inches plus or minus wide sign, the bottom of which is nine feet eleven inches plus or minus above the sidewalk and twelve inches plus or minus with a roof cornice.
Okay, do it.
Plus or minus.
Yeah, plus or minus.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R sixteen.
An ordinance granting Metro Machine Corporation permission to encroach into the right-of-way of Ligon Street with a parking lot subject to certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Will this give any relief to the residents on the south side that are, well, Berkeley in particular, who are affected by the robust shipyard business?
Yes, sir, it's our understanding that this gives them an asset that they-
Okay, okay, I would vote aye anyway. All right, thank you, aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R seventeen.
An ordinance finding a public necessity for the acquisition and fee simple of certain property located at Chesapeake Boulevard and East Little Creek Road as additional right-of-way for the purpose of providing pedestrian and vehicular improvements. Approving the acquisition of the property by purchase agreement or condemnation and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to fifteen thousand dollars from funds heretofore appropriated for acquisition of property and all related transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R eighteen.
An ordinance granting permission to Norfolk Housing LLC to encroach into the right-of-way of Thirty-Ninth Street between Hampton Boulevard and Kilam Avenue for the purpose of maintaining an elevated enclosed walkway, two support piers, and six-inch fire protection line. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R nineteen.
An ordinance permitting Bethel One LLC and Aston Shelton Enterprises LLC trading as cure to encroach into the right-of-way of Bodataut Street at five oh-three Bodataut Street with a table and two chairs for the purpose of outdoor dining in accordance with the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R twenty.
An ordinance granting permission to Adams Outdoor Advertising, Inc. to encroach onto city of Norfolk property at two forty South Military Highway with an existing sixteen-feet-plus-or-minus-by-twenty-four-feet-plus-or-minus-outdoor-advertising sign. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R twenty-one.
An ordinance granting Granby Mobile Corporation Doing Businesses Granby Shell permission to encroach into the right-of-way of Granby Street and Ullon Avenue and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R twenty-two.
An ordinance to amend section fourteen point one dash eighty-five Chrysler Museum Precinct so as to change the address of its voting place.